Hello, everybody. It is 9:01. Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Get to see all of our names. And it looks like our recording has begun. So I'm just going to share a couple of slides to get us going. So in a minute, we'll do our call to order and our question is going to be, what is a key difference between grants and contracts? Sneaking suspicion that we may not all be using the same language. So I want to try and start with that. And we'll see how time goes, but I would love for some of our state agencies to also answer this question after we've done formal roll call. And then we have, this is just a reminder of the trainings. Please make sure that you've done all of your task force trainings in workday. You should have gotten two emails from Amy about those. If you need those links still, please follow up with her. And then after we've done our roll call, we'll jump into some public comment. That's just to get us started. I'm going to take that down. Okay. So let's start roll call with, I'm going to just go on the list that we have on our agenda.
Present. Mercedes, do you want us to?
And answering the question, what is the key difference between a grant and a contract?
Thank you. Sorry, I'm losing my voice today if you just hear that. But yeah, I think the one key difference would be the procurement's process in terms of how grants are administered through funding versus contracts and what they're used for.
Is it just me who can't hear? I'm sorry.
We could hear her. I could hear her.
You do seem slightly delayed, Mercedes. Like, I don't know if that's just me.
Yeah, I'm mostly hearing an echo. I don't know if anyone else is too.
Okay. Now I can start. I think that was just me. I apologize for that all. Okay, so Swayth is here. You already went. Next, for someone, this is Debbie.
Good morning. I'm Debbie Dennis, Deputy Director at DAS. And I think the question was, what do I think the difference between a grant and a contract is?
What is the key difference in a grant and a contract?
Oh, okay. Gosh.
Or a key difference.
A key difference. So I think a grant provides money upfront and asks an organization to fulfill a mission with a, with this chunk of money. And in a procurement contract, there are a series of deliverables. And after the deliverables are completed, then the contractor gets paid.
Right, thank you. Heather.
Hi, Heather Fick, present. I think Debbie was pretty spot on with her definition of contracts versus grants. Grants are a little looser on deliverables. Contracts are pay for services or pay for specific, specific services or outcomes.
Question.
Present. And the key difference between a grant and a contract is the amount of control the, the grantor has over, or the contractor has over the way in which the grantee or recipient of the contract performs the work contained in the scope of work.
And that grants are put more control in the recipient's hands and contracts more in the funder?
Correct. Yeah, there's more, there's more administrative control under a contract than there is under a grant.
Thank you. Tamara.
Good morning. I have a very sick mother here, so just FYI, maybe in and out. I'm obviously present, mostly a little distracted. Difference between a grant and a contract. I, I agree that Debbie's answer, I was like, oh, that's pretty good. The grants are a little, it feels, I want to say less flexible. Although sometimes they can be more flexible. I think that a contract, one of the key differences of a contract is the specificity. And in my experience, is often more governmental than private.
Great, thank you. Katrina.
Good morning, everybody. Katrina Holland. I am present. In terms of differences between grants and contracts, I think it depends on the funder. So I have heard some grantors giving money upfront and ahead of time. I've seen them do it in installments. I've seen some grantors give money ahead of time, or I'm sorry, some folks that are funders contracting with an entity giving money upfront ahead of time. It just sort of depends on what's negotiated. I feel like the key difference between a grant and a contract is usually a contract is negotiating specific terms of how contractor is going to deliver services and what that defined scope of work is going to be. Whereas a grant typically, you know, is engaged with an agreement, does have a scope of work. But it's definitely, as someone said a little bit earlier, a little more flexible on what's allowable and what's not.
Thank you. Don Ash, I think Don Ash was going to be absent, so I'll call his name just in case. Okay, so let's see.
Morning, everyone. Great prompt, Mercedes. I like this. I think I agree with what I've heard, some really great definitions and thoughtfulness. I'll just add that for, to me, a grant is an investment and very trust-based. And contracting is a little bit more transactional. And I think what I've heard in terms of like service and outcomes, that all makes sense. So thanks.
Thank you. Bettina.
Bettina Shem, Old Mill Center for Children and Families. I agree with lots of what I've heard too. And, and my experience to the state with the state with grants and contracts, the experience is that grants are a lot more flexible. In the private world, grants too are much more easily extended. You know, if worked, because that's a trust base. And if things happen, then grants can be extended easily by a year or two, just because, say, the pandemic happened. So, and contracts are a lot more start and finish, and they're much harder to extend, they're much harder to renew. So the grants definitely have more of a trust base. Payment-wise, from the state level, I have not seen any differences. You know, accountability is quite similar from a state-level contract versus grant, because we've had stuff move from, from contracts to grants just because it allowed the state to be more flexible and then for us to get contracts faster or grants faster that are called con. Yeah, so it's, yeah, I think grants overall philosophy-wise, I think are more partner-based.
Thank you. Mary Ann.
Present. And to me, grants are the funds upfront. Contracts are reimbursable expenses as you go through the year, contract year. And also, it usually has a program plan with deliverable outcomes.
Thank you. Leah.
Did you mean me? Is there more than one Leah?
I know, that would be you.
Okay, I'm here and present. And did you want me to answer the question too?
Yes, please.
So one of the key differences is that contracts are super negotiable between the two parties. Grants, it is what it is.
Helen.
Present. This is actually kind of a hard question for me because there are so many ways to take it. I think when I was sitting in a seat where I was receiving federal government funds, the thing that stood out to me was that grants or contracts were much more enforceable, right? Like you, the government could ask for repayment of funds if the deliverables were not met. Whereas grants did not have that same standard because the idea was you're all trying something a little bit more innovative together, at least in our case. And so it might not have an exact deliverable because it was more experimental. And now in a funding seat at a foundation, I think that for us, you know, grants, especially those going to 501(c)(3)'s, which is the majority of our work, we are really focused on how is this benefiting the public at large? So what's like the mission fit? And how does this grant achieve aims of like the world or the society we want to see? Whereas, as others have mentioned, contracts are much more, okay, we want to get from point A to B. This is tried and true. We understand that this deliverable will come with this allocation of funds.
Very nice, thank you. Senator Campos.
Good morning. I am present and would agree with a lot of what has been said. Yeah, I don't think I have much to add.
Okay, thank you very much. And Representative Conrad.
Good morning. It is same with Senator Campos. You know, I appreciate hearing those distinctions and certainly looking forward to where the conversation goes from here and how we can improve both those processes. Because both of them have, have some different purposes, and particularly with the funding and how quickly you can get funding and how onerous it is. So excited to hear more about that.
All right, thank you so much. Okay, so now we will open up for public comment. So we have about two minutes per person. If there's anybody who would like to share public comment, I think you can probably use like the raise hand function. So we know if you want, if you're in the audience, you would like to provide public comment. Okay.
I didn't know if this was the way or the time to bring this up, but I just got disparity study that was sent to me surrounding contracting in Oregon. And I'm wondering if that's something we can talk about in this body. And if so, I sent it to Amy and she told me to bring it to the chairs, so. I don't know if you want me to just send it to everybody. It's a public document. I'm happy to send it to all. Okay. And then we can maybe decide if it's something to dig into in the future. Okay.
Absolutely, yeah, we can definitely bring it into the next agenda planning meeting and see how that might support our work. Thank you. It looks like one of the guests had put their hand up and now it looked like it went away. Debbie, I see your hand up.
Yes, it was just to follow on to Heather's question. I think we also have a website that has a lot of our disparity study information on it. So in addition to the study itself, which may or may not be posted on that website quite yet, maybe a link, Amy, to the task force for the entire disparity study website would be helpful.
Oh, that's awesome. Do you want maybe, well, can I just, I sent this to Amy? Can she just include that as well? Okay, thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, I'll do one last call for anybody who wants to do public comment. Our first presentation today from NAO scheduled to start at 9:30. So we'll give them a few more minutes before they arrive, which means that since we don't have public comment, we do have a little bit more time. And I would love to just invite the other agency representatives, if you would like to share a little bit about how your agency differentiates between contracts and grants.
I, I maybe do start Bettina from Old Mill Center, Children and Families. I think at the state level, we really don't distinguish because the contracts we have with the state agencies, when there were contracts, and now that they are grants, there is really not a change in terms of how we have to report, how we get paid. I think the only thing is that it sort of went quicker through the state system in terms of legal and, you know, some of the checkboxes to get the contracts out, because that used to take up to three or four months. So we, we would be delivering services and not get paid. And so the move to grants has allowed us to get those agreements earlier. And there hasn't really been a change from my perspective as a, as an agency delivering services in that change, other than we get our agreements earlier. And now they're called grants.
Okay.
So that is my experience with that.
Thank you, Bettina. Kirk, why don't you tell us what agency you're with and how you think your agency differentiates between contracts and grants?
So, good morning. My name is Kirk Rhodes and I'm with ODHS and OHA. And really, the distinction between grants and contracts, as we understand it, is that a grant has a program description. A contract has a statement of work. And a program description is written in a language of support, whereas a contract is written with deliverables and specific timelines, that kind of thing. Additionally, a grant has no substantial agency involvement. And that's one of the things that's mentioned in the procurement code as well. A contract does have substantial agency involvement. And, you know, the invoicing process and, 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 you know, receipt of, of milestones as, as a deliverable are all part of that. Additionally, a grant is not under the code, whereas contracts are under the code. And when we say the code, we're talking about RS279A, B, and C. And RS190 as well, RS244. So anyway, that, that really is a major distinction as we understand it.
Thank you. Mary Ann? Did you want to share something?
It looks like Rhodes, that was before me, Kirk Rhodes.
That was Kirk just now, who shared.
Okay. So I wanted to mention in our agenda setting meeting, we had a link that Swaytha gave us on the two-page deliverable. And I would like Amy to maybe post it here in our chat. I thought it was very interesting because there was only a two-page deliverable at the end of the task force, but there was a 42-page link in that deliverable. So I thought that was very interesting.
You're talking about the report that's due from the task force at the end?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and we can definitely talk about that a bit more. We've got, in our look ahead, we're going to be, at the end of our agenda, we're going to be looking at our next couple of months and how we start moving towards our deliverables. I do want to spend just a little bit more time on this grant and contract question. So it looks like we have a couple of people who have now responded in the chat. And we'll move to that in just a second. Let's see, anyone else want to share? Derek.
Hi. Derek from the Higher Education Courting Commission. So I echo everything that Kirk and Lori stated in the comments section. Those are great information for you to have. The other thing I want to point out is that because grants are outside the Oregon procurement code, we don't have to follow necessarily competitive thresholds or borrow the principles from the procurement code. But my agency, at least, and the other agencies I've worked for, we do. So if the, if there's a contract opportunity, there's certain thresholds. If you're over $10,000 and, and further on up the chain, but that's the important first distinction. We borrow that for our grant-making opportunities as well. But we don't have to. We can make a direct award if we wanted to as well, if, you know, our agency can justify doing a direct award without competition. But that's not required by statute or. That's all.
Thank you. And then going into some of the chat discussion. So we've got something from Caitlin, that contracts go through the state procurement process for ongoing goods and services. It's a process that's limited flexibility and it can be difficult to navigate. Grants are utilized based on each agency's granting authority, which could result in upfront or reimbursement or tranche-based funding. These requests for our agency are related to urgent needs. Okay, so that's kind of how, what opens up different opportunities there. Grants don't go through the state procurement process. Grants give us more flexibility. And then from Delk, grants are contracts, but contracts are not grants. I love that. Thank you. Non-grant contracts must meet certain state and federal laws. Grants are exempt from public contracting code. Grant is determined by having explicit authority in law. Substance parts of the performance. Okay, that's helpful. I thought I saw another hand go up, maybe not to share anymore there. So one of the things I'm interested in is also, before we came into the meeting, Amy did share with me some rules that DOJ is looking at to redefine grants as public contracts, which I'm assuming then would mean a lot of these distinctions we're talking about get even thinner. Like, because I, several times people are saying it's because the grants aren't subject to a certain kind of procurement process or DOJ review. And if those rules change, then they would be. So I wonder if someone from DOJ might be able to share if the state is allowed to have any difference between grants and contracts, or if some of the rule changes are meant to kind of dissolve differences. Kristin, do you want to share?
First, I should probably ask if there's anyone else from DOJ here today. I'm guessing maybe not, because I think Kate had a conflict. So grants are subject to parts of the public contracting code currently. And they do have to be reviewed for legal sufficiency if they meet the legal sufficiency threshold. All of the grants from all of the state agencies are funneled through the same section within the Department of Justice for review. That section is a little bit overwhelmed at the moment. And so we are pushing some grant reviews out to primary contact council within general council. But, but they are now and have always been subject to the same legal sufficiency review that contracts are. There are just other parts of the public contracting code, like the need for competitive procurement process at the, at the outset that are either slightly altered to completely non-existent for grants, depending on the funding source of the grant and the legislative or other federal grant requirements from where the money is coming from. So did that answer your question?
I think a little bit, but I wonder if you could say more about why this rule change is coming? Is there an absence in clarity in what you described that needs to be fixed?
Yeah, so what we discovered within DOJ is that there are some agencies that haven't been interpreting the rule the way that we were interpreting the rule. And so the rule change is just to clarify what we've always interpreted the rule to mean.
Okay. Mary Ann, you had a question here in the chat about a hearing?
Right, so there is going to be a hearing on the changes, the hearings tomorrow. Amy could post that, but I was going to ask. Amy could post that, but I was going to ask if Kate Dennison and Christine Galliano from DOJ could actually check out that hearing as a subcommittee maybe? And report back to us about those changes?
And if I'm unfortunately not available to attend the hearing, and Kate is not here today. But my, my colleague and good friend, John McCormick, is going to be the one that's leading the hearing. So you'll be in very good hands. Everyone will be in really good hands.
My, my, the reason I was asking that question is, I was wondering if this, these changes might be a way that we could recommend something in this change, in these proposed changes, or for the future, for our task force? If that was a way in to get some of the changes we needed?
Okay, it looks like maybe we're getting a little bit of things in the chat here about the hearing. Bettina?
Yeah, I was wondering if we could just post a recording of that hearing, you know, on our website? Because if, if we're going backwards in saying that all grants are now treated like contracts, from my point of view, that might actually get us back to an even more difficult system. Which means that maybe our suggestions need to be different. You know, if grants and contracts are now going to be the same legally, how the state manages it, because that sort of loophole wasn't supposed to be there, then we might have to respond to that from that hearing. I'd be happy to watch a recording, you know, if that's available.
Right, because I think part of some of the confusion that we've had and part of the reason for some of this is both like interchangeableness, as well as the inconsistency for how grants and contracts are, like you said earlier, really not treated any differently. So it's almost like, why do two separate systems exist if it's truly one system? And I think from the questions for DOJ, if the intent is to simply have a single system, why even give agencies the option of doing something different? Now, that might actually hurt their ability to meet some of their goals, not having any additional flexibility. But then at least it's clear to the public what the intent is of a relationship. Like if there is not a community investment, mission alignment type of relationship, if it is only transactional in a contract sense to be purchasing tasks from providers who can do those tasks, it would be helpful to kind of understand what, what world our state agency want, our state agencies want to live in. Okay, so there's a little bit more in chat, Debbie sharing that the changes would make the grants subject to the legal review. That grants have always been identified as a public contract. So this is kind of going back to like, they've always been the same thing and should maybe have never had two different names. And let's see, Representative Kynna, I see your hand up.
Thank you, appreciate it. One thing that, you know, one of the key differences for me between the grants and the contracts that you're talking about. Some of the contract, it's ownership of either the lands or the services being provided. So when I worked for Lane County Parks, we got a lot of contracts from the state, from whether it's for running our campgrounds or for managing marinas, it's because they were county properties. And so the state helped offset the costs of running these public benefit entities for our boat ramps that we had in our campground. So one of the key distinctions is who owns that property? And is there going to be a way that the state can help subsidize the operations and maintenance for that public benefit as well?
Thank you for that. So we are at 9:30. I do want to move us on to our next topic. So if folks have more questions, I think about the hearing, looks like we got a little bit of information there, but perhaps we can send out a follow-up email after this meeting with the other additional details. As we get into the look ahead piece that we're going to be working at the end of the meeting, we're going to be able to identify some questions that we want to have state agencies respond to. So kind of keep in mind, if you're having a thought right now, you're like, I would really like an answer to a certain question, maybe write it down so that when we get to the second part of our meeting, you can add those questions to our list. And so now I'm looking for Philip. Philip, are you in the room?
I am in the room, finally. I had a little trouble this morning, so I apologize if it caused any inconvenience, but I am here.
All right, well, we have you on for about 60 minutes. So we'll do presentation as well as some question and answer. And then after the NAO presentation, we'll take a little break. So take it away.
Great, thank you. And I don't know if I, I just want to make sure if I can do a share screen? And then we'll get the presentation started. So let's see how things will work out. Okay. All right, do folks? Oh, no, you're looking at the wrong screen. Hang on a second. I'm going to move things around. Sorry. Stop sharing.
Nice guitar.
That is Eddie Van Halen's guitar. And I've got on my other screen Stevie Ray Bond's guitar. They're both strat-type guitars. I, yes, I am a player. I mean, not that kind of a player, but a guitar player. Let's see, I want to make sure this, you're seeing the screen. All right, so you should hopefully just see the slide.
We are, yeah.
Great, okay, great. Thank you very much. So let me introduce myself. I am Philip Kennedy Wong with the Nonprofit Association of Oregon. And hopefully my colleague, Leslie Bennett, should be able to join us. I don't know if she had the same challenge. Oh, Leslie's right there, perfect. So I'm being joined by Leslie Bennett, who is the Chief Financial Officer for the Nonprofit Association of Oregon. And thank you so much for allowing us to have part of your time today. What we're going to go over is essentially what research that NAO has uncovered over the past year or two, and starting off with, you know, a very simple format of sort of giving folks a sense of what we found in terms of our work, workman's, the benefit comp study, also our survey study. And then we'll talk a little bit more about our policy labs and how it relates to the work that you're doing. And then we'll go over some suggestions in terms of what we learned that we feel that the task force might consider in terms of its work. So that being said, I'm going to go to the next slide. So about NAO, so some of you are already familiar, but some of you may not be. Nonprofit Association, our mission is to strengthen the collective voice leadership and capacity of nonprofits to enrich the lives of all Oregonians. We are a membership-based organization and we do represent the nonprofit sector in a variety of ways, including my role, which is representing the nonprofit sector to the state legislature. Next slide, so today's presentation, it will, it will be myself and Leslie Bennett, as we mentioned. And then a quick overview, like, as I mentioned, we'll go over an overview of our comps and benefit study, an overview of our contract survey findings from 2022. And, oh, this is sort of out of order, I apologize. We're going to shift to suggested data recommendations toward the end. And we'll talk about our policy lab findings and what is a policy lab? And then we'll talk about suggested solutions and then data recommendations. So let me first start off with our benefit and comp study. So this is a study that we do, I believe, annually. Is that right, Leslie? I just want to make sure I get that correct. I, I don't work on it directly, so I don't have quite the, the interval of, of the timing of it. But it's something that we put out that the nonprofit sector uses in terms of helping to determine wages and benefits for their own employees. It's done through a survey and you can see that we've had a number of people have participated and you can see that 89% of the respondents that reported hiring challenges increased their rate for compensation, meaning that in order for nonprofits to get the workers that they wanted, a lot of them had to increase wages in order to get them to actually sign on a dotted line to work for a nonprofit. The report also showed a average reported full-time turnover rate of 26% and an average reported part-time turnover rate of 41%, meaning that it's still, if you're comparing numbers, it's still relatively high compared to the private sector in terms of, of the challenges I think nonprofits face with workforce retention. Let me stop there and see if Leslie has anything to, she wants to add.
Yeah, that's something that I have experienced, working with the nonprofits that I work with across the state, is that there's been tremendous turnover since the beginning of the pandemic. I kind of joke that everybody's new in their job. But yeah, that turnover rate is really high and I'm not seeing that slow down anecdotally.
And this sort of feeds in obviously to the work that the task force is doing is it's, you know, it's, it's a combination of wages. It's a combination of benefits and other factors. It's high burnout rates and very challenging work that nonprofits face. I think especially those who are working in the human services arena. I will say that just a couple, couple more things that, that is worth noting that roughly 80% of the nonprofit sector do offer medical benefits for their employees. And surprisingly, most nonprofits don't have the ability to offer a flexible spending account or health accounts, savings account. And about three-quarters of the nonprofits that we surveyed offer a retirement plan. So not every nonprofit offers that. So you can get a sense of how that might compare to your own sort of situation. And then the other thing that's worth noting is, it's not listed on the slide, but roughly about 60% of the organizations that surveyed mentioned that they, they've had shortages in terms of certain types of physicians and they have turned to contracted services. And the most, the two most common contracted services for nonprofits is in bookkeeping and in IT. So next, I want to talk to you about, so we took the benefit comp survey and then we shifted and started to look at the challenges that we've heard over the years from nonprofits in terms of contracting or receiving grants from a public agency. So in 2022, in the summer of 2022, we undertook a study by conducting a survey. And the goals of the survey was essentially is to, was to identify the major challenges to successfully providing contracted services, to identify administrative, administrative and legislative solutions to those challenges and to advance any of those solutions among relevant stakeholders. So that was the goal of the study that we conducted in June of 2022. And this report that you see, this little graphic, was actually put out December of 2022. So it's, you know, it's roughly about a year old and you can get access to the report via that web link. And also, I forgot to mention, and I apologize for this, I did send out an invitation to all task force members to gain access into our Microsoft SharePoint drive that has a lot of these documents in it. So if you receive some sort of strange-looking invitation from Philip Kennedy Wong to a folder that, that was called Task Force on Grant Making or Grant Funding and Contracting, yes, that was legit. So I apologize for that, but you should be able to get a copy of this report there as well as in addition to other things such as, you know, like our policy lab PowerPoints and our policy lab video recordings. So what did we find in this contracting, contracting and grant-making survey? So this is who filled out the survey. We had actually roughly 168 people, but we had a couple of, I mean, sorry, 168 nonprofits. But there were a couple of duplicates, so the N was 163. And you can see that the vast majority of folks that filled out the survey that we put out were, were human services, followed by other, and then you'll see the related other types of social services like health and behavioral health, housing and homelessness, and then a few others down the line. Next slide. And so we also asked in the survey, what type of contracts these nonprofits had? And this is how it came across, it came out. So 92%, the N is 165, stated that they had contracts with the state, 76% with the county. And obviously, I think, you know, there's probably a good percentage of that county bar that represents state pass-through dollars, and then you'll see federal and city and other. So that gives you a sense of, of who filled it out and what type of contracts? What did we find out as far as top challenges? So this isn't a surprise. You'll see that the challenges do center around resourcing. So you'll see the top one was contract rates not covering adequate administrative costs, difficult application procedures or timelines. Contract rates not rising with cost increases over time, overly complicated or restrictive budgeting or invoicing requirements, burdensome in reporting requirements, and then challenges with the reimbursement process for grants, and then contracts not paying a living wage, and short-term contracts making planning and staffing difficult, and invoices not being paid in a timely manner. And then the requirement for matching funds were problematic. So these were the top 10 challenges. I'm going to stop there and see if Leslie has any insight that she can share as well.
Sure. Well, as you can see here, as Philip mentioned, it's really around resources. So the funding for the actual work seems to be not quite enough to cover what it actually costs. And the ability of the organizations to have the capacity to manage the grants and contracts is, is quite challenging because of just all of that administrative side of the work that it takes for an organization to do. And I think that this is well represented here. This is also what I've heard from, from nonprofits. But again, it's, you know, are we giving, are they receiving enough money to actually do the work? And are the expectations of how to actually manage the grant reasonable with the capacity that they may have?
Thank you, Leslie. So next slide. So I apologize for the small print. So this may be helpful. I, I, I know it's not, I know it doesn't list every state agency that's present on the task force, but, but these were the state agencies that were identified as which of the top challenges that nonprofits face based on the agency. So you can find your agency there. You'll see ODHS. ODE is actually not energy, it's Oregon Department of Education. You'll see Oregon Health, I'm sorry, Oregon Housing Community Services and Oregon Health Authority and folks know FEMA and USDA. In case you're having trouble, the blue numbers are the highest in terms of the top challenge. And then the sort of grayish-green is the second highest, the second challenge. And then the yellow is the third highest challenge. I hope folks can read that, but it kind of gives you a sense of how it broke down according to agency. So we also asked nonprofits to self-identify themselves, just to give folks a sense or give us a sense of who was filling out the survey. And so these next two slides will give you an idea of how many of the 160-plus folks that filled out the survey, how they identified themselves. So you can see that 51% of the organizations that that filled out the survey predominantly serves BIPOC communities. You can see that 46% predominantly serves people living in rural communities. And then you can see the, the percentage for the leadership of the organization and that I think, I believe is both board and executive leadership. And then you'll see also people with disabilities in terms of their percentage. So again, some more descriptions of the folks that filled out the surveys. And then of that, so the question is, were their challenges any different than the overall challenges that we just highlighted? So this is what we found out from those nonprofits that had particular identifications. So again, it's not a surprise, but there's some subtle nuance differences that these nonprofits found in terms of their top challenges. Contract rates not providing adequate administrative costs, contract rates not rising with cost over time, overly complicated or restrictive budgeting invoicing requirements, short-term contracts having a negative impact in reimbursement and matching fund payment proceeds very problematic. I do want to add, and I'll let Leslie add, that a lot of these nonprofits, they're they're pretty small. And so if you stop and think about, you know, the challenges that small nonprofits have, it's not surprising that things such as reimbursements or matching funds are problematic because most smaller nonprofits don't have the ability to front the cost of providing services and then wait for payments. So that is definitely a a problem. And then certainly the capacity for smaller nonprofits is very limited, especially when it comes to certain requirements such as the budgeting and invoicing requirements. Leslie can definitely speak to that in terms of her role in helping other nonprofits in terms of getting them the skills and the support necessary to be able to be competitive and be able to actually implement a grant or contract. So let me stop there and see if Leslie has any insights in terms of these types of specific nonprofits, especially smaller nonprofits.
Sure. Well, I do think that this list is really amplified for those small and emerging nonprofits because they often have, you know, very few staff and almost always focused on the actual delivery of whatever service they're providing. So they don't always have the support that they need for these areas. And when they do, it can be a disproportionate part of their piece of their budget and expense. So if they have to hire folks like myself or bookkeepers that can help guide them through some of the finance-related and compliance-related items, that it is often, you know, a much larger part of their budget than it is for a larger nonprofit that is offsetting that with lots of different programs. And again, as Philip's talking about, the assets often of these smaller nonprofits are quite limited, maybe they're new and they're still building those assets. They're putting all of their funds into the actual services so that they don't have a lot of, you know, cash on hand to pay for all of the items that they need to pay for in order to deliver those services while waiting for someone to pay them back sometimes for sixty, ninety days.
Yeah, and that's a great point. So let me say
Before you move on, Philip.
Sure.
Just before you move on, we did have a couple of questions in the chat around the scale of the miss, right? So like contract rates not being adequate. Do you have any information or even anecdotal stories to give us a sense of like how much on the dollar are people stressed about? Is it like this is covering twenty-five percent of what we what we needed to cover in order to actually perform the task? Is it sixty? Like, do we have a sense of, I know it's going to be different agency to agency, but if you have any anything you can share on that?
Also, do you have any anecdotes or stories that you can share?
Yeah, well, I don't have like any specific figures, but what I do know is that it's it's taking it in at all edges, right? So they often a nonprofit that's providing a service recognizes what their community needs and they want to provide what's actually needed. And they're giving a limited amount of money to do that. So they are pulling back on folks' wages, maybe, maybe not paying as much as it might be, you know, matching with our surveys that we've done. Maybe they are pulling back on how much it costs to buy some of their direct materials and not being able to do that. Maybe not actually reaching out and being able to afford some of the professionals that they might need, whether it's legal or financial or otherwise. So I think that it's really just kind of a constriction of the actual services and their budgets. So, you know, what it would actually take, you know, in my opinion, often is much more than what they're actually receiving. And that also includes things like the stability of the organization. You know, when you do pay a competitive wage and you have competitive benefits, then you have fewer turnovers, which actually provides better services, so on and so forth. So it's a real complex question and a complex answer to that, but it is kind of an interweaving of all of those different factors.
Yeah, and 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 I would say that, you know, and I that it's kind of a there's a double-edged sort of problem that smaller nonprofits face. There is the challenge of not having resources upfront for certain types of granting processes like the reimbursements in terms of fronting the cost of providing the services. But there's also the inverse as well, and that is if you're a small nonprofit and there's a state agency that wants a contract with you, but and then they're willing to provide you, you know, some resources to do it, but you can't take on the grant or the contract unless you have in place, as Leslie mentioned, you know, like a finance manager or even like an HR person. So so it's sort of like a double-edged sword and it kind of comes back to, I think, one of our recommendations that we'll talk about later, and that is having capacity building and technical systems for 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 nonprofits to help them successfully navigate both situations. There were a couple of questions in in the chat. I don't know the answer to Michelle's question in terms of of if the FEMA grants were passed through or not. Leslie, do you have a sense of how FEMA grants work?
They are incredibly challenging, honestly. The level of detail that's required for an organization to be reimbursed, even for small amounts, is is quite excessive. And I don't know if in this survey, it was just FEMA funds coming through other entities or if it was direct, I'm not sure, you know, who the respondents were exactly, but the federal government, you know, has uniform guidance, so they have this body of compliance requirements. And then some of those agencies have excluded themselves from those uniform guidance requirements. The uniform guidance requirements are a pretty high standard. It would take a fair amount of internal, you know, best practices and staffing to meet those goals. But then when you add on to it additional or even more in-depth requirements, it is really very difficult for small organizations because, you know, instead of going, having like a regular audit or something like that, they're having to provide every receipt for something, which is pretty excessive. I do see a couple of hands up.
Sure, yeah.
Go ahead and take two comments and then we can keep moving.
I think I saw Katrina and then Heather.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to, I think somebody asked if there was like anecdotal evidence or just an example of what this could look like, and I I would love to provide one really quickly, specifically around COVID assistance that was administered through general funds from the state. I think that is the biggest real-world, real-time example that we can provide to you. Stick with me for a second, it's gonna get a little complicated. So essentially, the state legislature allocated money to OHCS, OHCS then allocated money to the Community Action Partnership of Oregon and a bunch of other different, a couple of other sort of ad hoc distribution systems that took several months to actually get to those distribution systems and the community action agencies. By the time it got to those spaces, some money was was scraped off to cover admin costs, of course, for OHCS and then for CAPO and some of the distribution spaces. But then a lot of our agencies were given these giant dollar amounts to hand out that totaled sometimes over a million dollars or seven hundred thousand, which was appropriate, let me be very clear, which was a very appropriate response to what was happening. But then we had to fight tooth and nail to get the required FTE and administrative staff to be able to track where the money went, track how much was given, and then report on the backend whether or not that the the people that we assisted continued to remain housed after we got that money. And so I think in one instance that I can think of right now at a different agency I was working at at the time, we got a little under, just under one FTE to be able to administer the cost and we could charge a certain percentage of admin based off of those operations costs, which totaled less than twenty thousand dollars. So we had to pile on the reporting requirements to the to the existing administrative staff who are trying to get these checks out the door. And and also train new staff who were trying to get these checks out the door by meeting this by meeting people in the community, figuring out who to give the money to. But we were never adequately provided the necessary overhead FTE costs or administrative costs to be able to keep up with the reporting requirements. We wanted to be able to say to the legislature, look at all this amazing work that you did and all these these hundreds of thousands of people that you invested in to save from the brink of homelessness as a result of your rent assistance. And we tried to do that, and as you saw, there were a ton of fumbles because we just didn't have the capacity because nobody invested in it properly. So that's probably the biggest real-world example that we can point to recently.
Thanks, Katrina. Heather?
So I wasn't gonna pile on to that one, but I happen to be the chair of an organization that's also a capable organization, and they are still digging out from not getting the administrative costs covered from taking millions of state dollars and supporting Oregonians because they couldn't take admin on the supportive services. That's a problem. It's the most highly transactional thing you can do is write a check to an individual and then have to track them. But what I was gonna say is my chat isn't working, so if someone could help me technically with that, that would be great. I can't type in it. It says chat is only available during the meeting, but I'm seeing that other people can chat.
I'm having that same challenge as well.
And I left and came back in and it still isn't working. Is yours, Helen?
No, it's definitely not. I can't even put my cursor in there.
Yeah, ditto. So if we could fix that, that'd be great.
Thank you. So the next phase of what NAO did was after we conducted the survey, we knew that, okay, you know, here are all these problems that nonprofits have identified. Well, what are we gonna do about it? So and there are so many different options, so many different ideas and policy concepts, so on and so forth, that we decided to create a platform for nonprofits to come together and in a in a style of a laboratory. So we created something called a NAO Policy Lab, which was a a way for us to bring together nonprofits to develop consensus around a problem and hopefully develop consensus on solutions that result in policy concepts for NAO to advance legislatively. We also recognize, you know, with our work on Senate Bell six oh six that created the task force, that we also wanted to provide additional information to the task force and, you know, wanting to host these policy labs around subject matter that is relevant to the task force so that the task force members can benefit from it. And that these policy labs would be meeting on an ad hoc basis. And, you know, we would keep on going until we identify solutions. So it's an ongoing program now of NAO. And as I mentioned earlier, I did send out a Microsoft SharePoint invitation to all the task force members. And I'm happy to extend that access to the state staff too, if they want to get access to the same documents. So if you want to just, you know, put your name in the chat to the as far as the state agencies, if you want to get access to that SharePoint folder, let me know. But so essentially, we moved ahead and hosted the following policy labs over the last oh, three months. So we chose three subject areas that we felt that was related to the work of the task force, but also related to some of the problems that was identified by the survey. And you'll see that we chose work for wages, workforce retention, universal grant, contract applications, and then nonprofit gap funding. And we actually had three sessions of those. And as I mentioned, once you get access to the SharePoint folder, you will be able to see the PowerPoint that was used and also a video recording of the of these sessions. So who did we invite? So one of the things that's that's a that's a benefit for NAO is that we work a lot with our counterparts from across the country. We're part of the National Council of Nonprofits and they actually staff a a quarterly group of non-state associations and nonprofits on contracting and grant making. And so through that process, we're able to identify subject matter experts, and these were just the ones that we invited recently. You'll see Maryland nonprofits, we actually invited the state of Illinois to talk about their program. We invited the Fund for the City of New York, which is sort of like a collaboration on government and foundations. And then we, you know, we had folks from nonprofit New York and also a a nonprofit wages campaign called Just Pay New York. So what did we find in these? So in the wages and workforce retention policy labs, we found a couple of concepts that we wanted to share with you that is worth noting. So there's definitely concepts of creating a wage board to upset wages. There's also discussion of creating a prevailing wage for nonprofit wages. There are also ideas around creating an automatic cost of living adjustments. And then and the the use of a wage standard based on the National Low Income Housing Coalition recommendation for nonprofit workers for of twenty-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents an hour. We also learned that there's actually a group of nonprofits in Oregon that banded together to to put together a proposal for solutions. If you're not familiar with Oregon Solutions, it's a a, I think, a quasi-state body that helps to bring different stakeholders together to resolve any challenges or problems like a public policy-related sort of problem and to help a group reach some sort of solution. So we learned that there is a group of Oregon nonprofits that are in that process where they put together a proposal for Oregon's solutions to help bring together stakeholders around nonprofit wages. They are predominantly based in the Portland metro area. And what they shared with us in terms of their experience is that, you know, COLAs and inflation adjustments aren't going to be enough to reset wages to prevent a couple of things. One is, you know, it's to ensure that wages aren't poverty level. And the other is to ensure that wages are actually competitive so that you don't have the kind of burnout or folks leaving nonprofit jobs for different sectors for better pay. And part of that thinking, you know, is centered around what's called comparable worth economic theory, and I'm not going to get into like a theoretical conversation. But I can talk more about that later offline, but essentially it's equal pay for equivalent work and it's a theory that seeks to address some of the inequities created inherently in the biases of how we decide how we pay people. And there are biases based on race, gender, the type of work that you do, whether it's nonprofits or not, to the type of clientele that you work with. So that whole theory is centered around So that whole theory is centered around sort of addressing some of these inequities that have led to historic low wages in the nonprofit sector. The other power policy lab that we had was, and I'm not going to read this all, but we did have a couple of sessions on universal grant contract applications. And this kind of gives you a sense of some of the ideas that, that were brought up. I know it's small print and I apologize for that. But we did have some nonprofits that wanted to come together and, you know, identify some things that that they felt was important. And we'll definitely, we'll email you a copy of this screenshot of the, the chalkboard exercise. So you guys aren't the only ones doing chalkboard exercises. So but anyway, we'll, we'll share that with you. And then we also, I'm sorry, before I do that, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more later on one, on one particular proposal that came through the policy labs on grants and contract applications that has to do with the Illinois system. So I'll sit tight on that one. The next policy lab that we did were around stopgap funding for nonprofits. So these are, you know, situations where, you know, the funds or grants, you know, dollar amounts aren't made available to nonprofits immediately. And it, and it has created a gap funding. So whether it's late payments or, or whether it's the, the changing of a biennium and the funds not being made available until like three or four months after the biennium closes. Or if it's, you know, a capital project that a nonprofit is working on and it has been appropriated funds for part of, you know, a project to say, I don't know, developing housing, but those funds aren't made available. But those funds are needed in order to have the process moving forward for a capital project. All those are examples of, of gap funding problems. And so what we learned were some of these ideas that were brought up. So as far as what can be done. So I'll just tick them off really quickly, low interest loans for nonprofits to no interest loans for nonprofits. Oh, I just see the time check. I'll be very quick. Returnable grant fund upfront payments, elimination of reimbursement payments, inflation adjusted, multi-year contracts and 30-day payment requirements. So those were some of the findings that we had in our policy labs. Next, I want to sort of break down some of these solutions based on the six areas that this task force has been charged with. So starting with changes to state procurement practices to support living wages. Sure. So you'll see basing contracts and grant funds include wages to nonprofit employees to meet a living wage standard. And you'll see in the blue are examples of legislation and concepts that other states have pursued in these, in these policy concepts. Flexible contract and grant terms, multi-year contracts and grants, adjustable contract and grant funding levels. So you can read it all the way through and get a sense of what some of these policy concepts that might be worth considering for this task force. Let me stop and see if Leslie has anything to add to any of these ideas.
Um, actually, I think that this is really a great list and there are such great examples of what other states are doing. So I know that Philip will be sharing that information with you all as you go forward with your work.
Okay, great. Sorry, I'm trying to move through, make sure, making sure that I don't take up too much of your time. Yeah, the other area that you guys are charged with as far as the task force and uniform application procedures. So we've identified two steps that is worth considering. Obviously simplifying the application procedures and sufficient administrative rates, especially when it comes to NICA. And I'm happy to report that the NICA rate that's being proposed by the feds right now is to increase it to 15%. And just one word about that, and this is like, you know, like I said, it's, I think I mentioned this in another presentation of mine that what we've heard from nonprofits is that the NICA rate sometimes as it comes through to the nonprofits, that the state agency will, what's the word I'm looking for without sounding negative? Go ahead, Leslie.
Some, sometimes it doesn't pass all the way through to the nonprofit. So, you know, if, if a nonprofit has, you know, there's the 10% de minimis for federal funds. But if they also have a negotiated rate with the, with the federal government, that's supposed to be honored as well. But sometimes that doesn't always pass down all the way through to that nonprofit.
Thank you. So I'm going to move, move us quickly. So standard contracting granting language that permits flexibility. Obviously this is pretty self-explanatory and there are a couple of examples that states have pursued in California and in New Jersey. And this is especially important in terms of allowing some of the funds to be able to use for fundraising because there are situations where the funding level is not sufficient to actually pay for the service. But it also restricts the nonprofit from using some of those funds to raise additional money through their development team. So that is something that we wanted to flag. Sufficient reporting requirements. You know, I, I think we heard this loud and clear in our survey report that reporting requirements should be commensurate with a funding level. And that's important in terms of ensuring that the capacity of the nonprofit is right sized with what's being asked as far as, you know, not having the bulk of your nonprofit capacity taken up in reporting versus actually paying and providing the services directly. I think centralized nonprofit technical assistance capacity building is pretty self-explanatory. So I'm going to jump to the next slide. This is the same thing. This is the, another way to address a, a ongoing evaluation of grant procurement processes, but is by creating a centralized nonprofit technical assistance. And I want to share with you a case study. So as, as I mentioned earlier, we did a policy lab with the state of Illinois and they have a system called the Illinois Grant Accountability and Transparency Act. And it had a lot to do with trying to reduce redundancies in how grants are administered and to, you know, essentially eliminate duplications and then create a system that allows continual sort of oversight over the grant system where there are constant improvements being made. And so this kind of gives you like the, the, the timeline of what Illinois did. And I do highly encourage you to listen in on the policy lab when you get the chance. But they created this sort of structure and, and we're not recommending that Oregon create a similar structure, but all of these committees and subcommittees are used to provide oversight over the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act program. And these are subcommittees that are filled with nonprofit representatives and also state agency representatives to ensure that the Grant Accountability Transparency Program is continually making changes to reduce redundancy. And I, I will say that, you know, what we've learned from Illinois is that they've saved a lot of money from reducing redundancy. I think it was a high amount of money. I want to say it was around $300 million of which obviously could be redirected back into funding grants. So that's an important note. Just a few more slides. The payment models that prioritize full cost recovery, timely payments, obviously. The payment process such as eliminating use of reimbursements, having upfront payments, that's also very important. And then again, fair wages and continuation of, there are additional things that could also be looked at for full cost recovery, multi-year contracts, adjustable contract and funding levels. And again, sufficient admin rates. And then moving on, sorry for running this, running very quickly through this. So here's what we want to leave you. So we just ran through, I know a lot of information about policy solutions that we learned from the policy lab, but also from across the country. Here are some things that we have felt or learned that would be helpful for the task force to do as far as data collection. So these are the final two slides. We do believe it's important for this task force to be able to get the following sets of data, the number of grants and contracts by agency and department in it and, and with nonprofits in the current and previous biennium at minimum. The total dollar value of the contracts and grants by agency slash department and the source of funds in the current previous biennium. And then a comparative analysis of the following areas. Types nonprofits that receive grants, including those that serve culturally specific communities as distinct from corporate nonprofits such as hospital, healthcare systems and higher ed with professionalized salaries. I can't emphasize that enough because in terms of the data that's out there, when you think about medical systems or university salaries, they will skew, I think, you know, what the median sort of wages and challenges that nonprofits receive because those two areas, and it's not obviously limited to just healthcare systems and, and, and higher ed. But they do skew the reality and that is, you know, we are seeing nonprofits with high turnover and challenges with making their wages competitive. So the continuation of the comparative analysis, it'd be great to see this task force to do a comparative analysis of grant and comp, grant and contract application processes and, and, and appeal procedures and, you know, to be able to present it in a matrix form where you can compare and contrast the different state agencies as well as grant reporting requirements and compliance requirements. And then lastly, a comparison of grant stipulations and restrictions on wages and payment procedures. So that is all three, two slides. And I apologize if we had too many slides, but there's just so much good information that we wanted to share. And like I said, we'll have hopefully a copy of this PowerPoint for you so you can look into it as well as additional information in the Microsoft SharePoint folder. Let me see if Leslie has any final thoughts.
Um, no, but I did want to point out that it's in the chat that this presentate, these, these slides are on the task force webpage. And I'm noticing some folks in the, in the chat that have added their email addresses that maybe haven't received the invitation for SharePoint or maybe are not on the, on the standard list and I am taking note of that.
Yeah, I will definitely add the state agency representatives. So appreciate all the folks in the chat that expressed an interest. So I do have a, see a couple of questions. I'll leave it to the co-chairs to decide how we want to proceed.
Yeah. So we, so you did go quick at the end, but you did then save us 10 minutes for questions. So let's go ahead. Marion, jump in.
So I actually went on the website for GATA and they have a University of Illinois module that you can sign up and take. It has six modules that tells that is what is GATA, key pieces of GATA, how to apply for a grant, introduction to uniform guidance, which is like the de minimis OMB part. And then I thought this was very well done and it was done by the state university and our Oregon State University could definitely, or OSU could do the same. It was well worth the time spent looking at that link for Illinois.
Thank you.
And I, I did want to let folks know when you do get the invitation from our Microsoft SharePoint folder, you'll be asked to verify your email and you'll get like a code to verify that's who you are. So don't be alarmed when you see that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Alicia, please.
Thanks. Great presentation. Thanks so much. I appreciate all that information that was compiled and I look forward to probably doing another review of it in a few days. I'm, I really liked what Philip talked about in terms of like data that could be helpful to us. I totally agree with everything that he was saying. And I would just add that I would love to see how many, I'm going to try to make sense. We know there are organizations that are working with multiple state departments. And so when we think about something like uniform application procedures, like how many people are we talking about? I think it's a lot of organizations that would really benefit from a streamlined process that multiple state departments could work from as an example. So I guess I just want the data to try to tell that story of like, oh, there's, are there 20? Are there 100 organizations that are, you know, reporting different things? Sending 990s to each department, sending their audits to each department. So I guess I would, I, I would love for us to pursue some of that, that data that Philip suggested, plus getting some information about how many nonprofits have multiple contracts with state departments, if that makes sense. Thanks.
Bettina.
I had a question regarding the investments that the states have made, you know, Philip or do you know how much the states actually invested in the people power, you know, to get these things up and running? Because that would be part of, you know, if we make a recommendation, thinking about what will it take to do it well, you know? And if there is more data about that in terms of the investments that might have to be made.
Are, are you referencing the, what, what, what it costs Illinois to put together their system or are you referencing other policy?
Yeah, I think any, yeah, I'm thinking any of those changes, you know, what, what do they know about what it took? And how long it took to make it happen, at least for some initial, you know, when it hits the nonprofits again, when the changes were implemented. Cause we, we know just how long it takes for data systems. We know, you know, some of that and just wanting to be realistic as we make those recommendations will be request in terms of it being implemented.
That's a great question. I, I think it will cost money. And it's obviously, it's, it's going to cost money depending on what solutions or recommendations that the task force is, is making. I think certainly anything with technology, like let's just take for example, creating a Oregon equivalent of the GATA system in Illinois. You know, I think that would require a lot of IT. When I asked them, you know, how they created their system, they had to build it from scratch. So they had to essentially hire programmers and obviously that costs money. But then there are other solutions that I would say that are low hanging fruit that are less costly. So for example, if we had a, a recommendation that the de minimis rate for NICA should be 15% and it should be honored across state agencies, you know, that could be done, you know, I think relatively inexpensively. You know, then there's also like, I like the concept of upfront payments, you know, or returnable grant funds where you have a system that fronts the money that's already been appropriated. that fronts the money that's already been appropriated by a state agency. So it's not really losing any money, but it's essentially making the money available as quickly as possible, rather than making a nonprofit wait or having to go through a reimbursement system. So that could be done in a way I think that is a low cost solution. And it could go a long ways. And so those are just a couple of examples, but you know, certainly when it comes to say wages, if we are going to right size wages where we are trying to reduce the turnover rate in nonprofits and ensuring that nonprofit wages aren't poverty level wages. I think that will be a very expensive ask and it will need to be phased in. I think it would, it would have to be a way of creating a new set of wage standards. And then having those wage standards phased in in a way that allows the state to continue services without having, you know, any significant disruptions in the continuity of those services as the state works its way to, you know, creating a way of, well, at least work its way to developing the political well and to support for allocating more funds for the labor costs of nonprofit provided services.
Thank you. Yeah, as you were talking, I was just thinking the hiccups we have every biennium, you know, getting the money out the door when it's continuous services. And maybe there'll be some suggestions in there too, because that seems to be what really gets us every biennium. Especially if the contracts are going to get more complicated. Then, you know, the money can't go out the door until something's signed. And that's, it seems to be a challenge. So something for us to consider.
Very good. Probably have time for one more comment or question if anybody wants to jump in. Okay. Well, thank you so much, Philip and Leslie, for being here with us this morning and sharing this great, great information. Really appreciate you taking the time. As it was said, there, if you go to our task force website, you can pull up the slides. And then those links that we were all seeing to the different state information are active in that document. So you can kind of explore around a little. We are going to go ahead and take a 10 minute break. So we're going to reconvene at 11, or I'm sorry, at 10:40. And then we'll jump into the second half of our agenda. So I'll see you all in 10 minutes, 10:40. Thank you so much, Philip. Thank you so much, Leslie. Okay, let's start coming back. You can throw up a little thumbs up so that I know you're back or turn your camera on if you're a camera on kind of person. Thank you. So the next part of our agenda is we're going to have one of our other task force members, Helen, come and share with us about some research that could potentially be done to support some of the work that we're doing here. I'll let Helen kind of explain the scope of the work. And I think she was also hoping to collect any questions or feedback from this group as well to help support that work.
Thanks so much. Hi. Okay, so this is really an effort to identify, allocate, and approve financial resources for an organization to do research that would support the work of task force. In the conversation that we've been having earlier today, I've identified a lot of questions and also resources nationally and within Oregon that this task force could potentially look at. The challenge that I think probably a lot of us face is that we don't necessarily have the time to review everything and then come to an analysis or synthesis of what would work best in the Oregon context. So I'm trying to figure out if there's an outside organization that can be working on this independently, but also in partnership with the task force. I've identified at least five areas of potential or five streams of potential work, which have already been mentioned again earlier in this call and in this conversation. This includes original data collection, analysis of existing data sets, synthesis of findings, tailoring of recommendations for the Oregon context, and then resources available and or needed to implement changes and recommendations. My request for all of you, as I'm working internally in Meyer, to move these resources to a partner would be to think about, one, what resources do you know of? So the disparity report, the many different resources that NAO just presented, anything within your institutions. I know that the agency representatives here have data that they can share with us. I don't know what form that's going to come in. So, you know, hopefully if we are able to get this all approved, that can come in whatever form it needs to. And then we'll have some help sorting through all of it. So the first is just the different resources or information that we can look at collectively. And then the second is questions that we want to examine. So maybe existing research isn't there. We don't have the data sets. But we have these questions, for example, the question of, you know, the the gap for full cost recovery, what's the difference between the reimbursement and the actual? We don't necessarily have that information yet. So we have a little bit of time to think about this. Didn't expect all of you to come with all of those questions off of mind. I think that with the timeline I'm working on with Meyer, we should be able to identify and hopefully approve funding in January. If that's the case, that gives us about a month to really come up with a robust list of everything that we want to look at. I don't think, I can't promise that everything will be examined, but I think it would be a good place to start and it might be worth setting up a subcommittee to both receive, collect that information as well as prioritize the the questions that we would want the researcher to look at first. So that is the summary. And because it's really, I do really want this to be, you know, research on behalf of this task force, not something that Meyer is doing. Really curious to hear any initial thoughts or comments or questions.
I think one of my questions, Helen, is, excuse me. We have kind of like these six different buckets of places where we can make recommendations for the the research that you're imagining. Is it specific to any one of these charges? Like, are you like most interested in the wages question, the application question? Is there any kind of emphasis that you're looking at?
I don't think so. I wanted to come to this task force because I want to get opinions on that. Because of our timeline, I don't know if we'll be able to thoroughly examine every single one of those areas. So again, we might need to prioritize and after an initial exam examination of what already exists, that might help us say, okay, actually, we need to spend a little bit more time collecting data here, whereas in this stream, we can spend more time synthesizing information. So I really want it to be, hopefully it'll be flexible enough for us to, you know, meet the needs of of the task force, depending on where we are after the initial research gets started.
Thanks. Thanks, Helen, for your leadership in this. And thanks to Meyer for putting some resources into this. My big question really is like, what will actually move the dial on wages? I think, you know, when I think about a year, a year ago, when we were like writing this bill and all the things that shaped it, like there were pieces of low hanging fruit around uniform application, 30 day payment, and those are all so important and the nonprofits are hurting and we absolutely should work to fix that. And when we look at all these examples across the country, which are, I have been fascinated by, I really enjoy learning about them. You know, I haven't heard which ones are, which ones, if any, are increasing wages. That is the biggest issue impacting our sector. And so I would hope that any research that we do tries to get at that question so that when we make our list of recommendations next fall, we can point to like, this was our charge and here's what we we think is the solution. Thanks Helen.
Yeah, and I would just say that Philip and Jim actually put me in touch with the executive director of the Just Pay campaign in New York. And I had the opportunity to meet with her because I was in New York for other work related things last week. They have been, you know, margin successful in increasing wages. But they had to create a whole system outside of uniform guidance. They actually said like. We we tried to get New York to adopt that they would not, and I'm wondering if Oregon would be in a different place, but those are, you know. Noted that there's a prioritization on solutions that actually passed worked and. We can point to to say, you know, not only did this improve XYZ, but also had all of these co benefits. And I talked to Michelle specifically about that now that you've had this in place for a little while. Did the hypothesis hold true? Like, what are you learning about having some of that stability, having a de minimis? Having more uniform standards and how you operate. So. Absolutely want to focus on, you know, what has been done and seen to be successful. Patina?
Oh yeah, thanks for offering that, you know, as I'm thinking about it, I've got two, you know, two thoughts going through my mind. One, you know, as we get data would be be good to have capacity to analyze that data, you know, so just have some capacity of a. Analyst or someone who will look at what the state departments might give us, you know, the information that's coming in. For Oregon that helps us analyze it because we as a task force don't necessarily have that and. We don't know how flexible the state resources are to give us that and we have a very short timeframe. So that's one thought I had. And then, you know, one question in my mind is often about uniform guidance and. The cost of this way of doing overheads versus the benefit of doing this way of overheads because there's so much compliance costs around. Uniform guidance and like we were saying, all the invoice copies and is. Is this really a more effective way for us in Oregon to adopt a federal rule or is there a better way? Of doing this and still have good accountability? That's sort of, I see a real conflict there and I don't know if anyone's ever done research on. Is what is really the better way, you know, in terms of accountability and cost of doing it? That I have some real reservations about the federal rules and how, what they do in terms of equity, compliance. And cost of all of those.
Thank you. Yeah, those are good considerations. It would probably solve some problems and cause other problems. So. And taking away that that question of like, what are other possibilities? I don't know whose hand went up, Debbie, I think maybe Debbie?
Sure, I just have a quick, and it doesn't have to be answered here Helen, but I was curious in your. Conversations with the folks in New York. Sounds like they put a lot of effort into it and then, you know, the state didn't adopt the recommendations and so. I was wondering if you also were able to get information about what, why, like why they didn't adopt it. I'm curious if it was just a. Lack of a priority or if there were some other barriers that we would need to be aware of. So maybe we could be working on what those barriers are simultaneously.
Yeah, I think it was just a negotiation, but and I can definitely dig into that more, but. The initial response was that the New York state agencies felt that. Their systems were too specific. They already had policies and procedures in place that would make it really difficult. For them to all adopt uniform guidance. So, but I will definitely dig into that more as well. Thank you. Mary Ann?
So the adoption, Oregon's adoption of the de minimis, I think is. A very important piece of this. They're currently, are they just closed? Taking comments on raising the de minimis from 10% to 15%. And what that means is you can take 15% of your wages, fringe. Program expenses, all those kinds of things and they will reimburse you those as. As admin, a non-direct costs, indirect costs. And I would really like maybe Kai Turner, who's doing finance and education. To to weigh in, but I think that's our easiest way to get fully funded programs and contracts. For people that don't already have a a NICRA, a federally accepted rate. So I'd love more comments on that.
I think that de minimis is very, very helpful if organizations don't have a NICRA, I, but I also think that 15%. From what we see. With our partners is actually still lower than the indirect that most organizations have, particularly organizations with a budget under $5 million. So I, that will definitely be carefully examined, but to Patina's earlier comment, what's. Are there other ways to look at this issue that will result in full cost recovery? And I say that having run an organization for eight years that had to work under the 10% de minimis, like it was nowhere close to our administrative rate, which was closer to. 23%. So we want to just be careful that we're not making a recommendation. That will still create a gap. But I think like it's all within scope for us to look at more closely and analyze.
Right, well, I think adopting that, the uniform guidance, OMB, uniform guidance, that's good all across the board. Whether you choose to use it or not, there's no downside to it.
Yeah, if it can be seen as a floor instead of a ceiling, absolutely. So maybe that's part of the recommendation that we have to make sure gets put into that. Katrina?
Thank you. Um, so, uh. I've been, I've been wrestling in my brain for figuring out how to say this and I think I'm just gonna say it. So I think what would be really helpful is, you know, there's been a lot of questions around what, what is the gap of what's funded and what's. What's the actual true cost? I have sick kids at home and he's humming in the background, so sorry about that, but, um. I would, I, I think it's probably given the time constriction, time, yeah, given the amount of time that we have, I don't think that it would be. Beneficial to do like a large study, but perhaps like a sample. Study with a set with a couple of different organizations for different types of dollars that are moved through the state. Would be helpful to do a, here's what we were funded and here's what it actually costs to run the program effectively. And have a study done. So maybe that's like a program manager. That is working with a couple of different nonprofits, finance people. Or people who are doing finance who may not necessarily be finance people. So that way we can give an example to the legislature. The difficulty with asking. This question and asking nonprofits to do this is it takes a lot of time. And it takes a lot of effort to put that information together and not knowing whether the legislature is going to make a difference in what they fund, what they don't, whether agencies are going to make a difference in what they fund and what they don't, makes it a little less appealing.
Yeah. I feel like Katrina, you may have gotten cut off at the end, but agree that we would want to. Minimize any burden on nonprofit partners or grantee partners.
Sorry, my computer died. I'm back. But anyhow, it makes it a little less appealing. So I don't know if there's also some work to be done or that can be done. With the governor's office or Speaker of the House or some of our colleagues in this room to try to. You know, have a placeholder bill or something that helps to implement whatever findings those are. That comes out of that would be helpful just to make it appealing so that folks don't feel like they're wasting their time. That's one of the things that came to mind Helen and just want to say thanks again, echo thanks for your leadership on trying to. Fund that kind of work.
Okay, so I, yes, so some sample or draft legislation that would. Have these recommendations put in place and then. Regarding case studies, there will, I'm sure there will be case studies and there will, you know, we'll kind of look at that gap, but. To your point about persuasiveness. I guess this is where I love guidance for people who work more closely with the decision making bodies. On, you know, what is going to be persuasive because I I know that sometimes when we just come. With different anecdotes, of course, that's powerful and that's moving, but it might feel like it's one, one example and not a whole data set. Oh, Representative Conrad, you're probably a good person to answer this.
Thank you. Yeah, so I can speak from my, from my perspective in the House and all that Senator Campos speak for, for the Senate side of the building. But absolutely, you know, one of the, the report that is due, I think it's next September. Absolutely, whatever we come out of there that makes sense to put into legislation, we will have a bill. That will go ahead and implement some of that. So hopefully the report comes out next September or November, we'll have a chance to get before the relevant committee or committees. In ledge days and to start lobbying and selling it and providing that justification for those. And some of that absolutely is going to be the funding in joint ways, I mean, co chairs set that budget. So it's going to be important that we have that data and that economic support for the joint. Chairs so they can evaluate that. The other side, you know, the processes and the terms and conditions. Are going to be different because that may or may not have as significant a budgetary impact. And so to be able to sell that and to be able to lobby and provide that support and justification for it. Is going to be crucial. It's going to have to be on both the House, House and the Senate side to be able to do that, but there is support for it. But we just need to have a solid and tight report at the end of this and to see what we're going to do and some of that might, might be a phasing. You know, depending on how extreme we change the structure, we change the dynamics. You know, a part of the report could be phasing, okay, this long session in 25, this is what we want to see. And either in the 26 or the next long session in 27, this is what we want to see, we want to work towards because we've got more work to do. So I think that's part of the reason why Senator Campos and I are in this to help advise on that. And at any point in time, I'm happy to advocate for it and happy to have conversations and work through some of these details as we get a little bit further down the process.
Wonderful, thank you. Senator Campos?
Just wanted to echo what Representative Conrad noted. And we'll say, you know, as somebody who serves on several ways and means the the full and two subs. How much we can talk about what the impact is. The data behind that, you know, we want to know that that the investments that we make. Are that we're seeing things come to fruition, that we're seeing the benefits in our community and, you know, we, we know in the, in this group that there are so many benefits towards making. Investments in this, but we want to make sure that all of that is reflected in the data that we report back.
It's helpful to know what will be persuasive and supportive for both of you. Their comments. All right, well, this is just an initial. Discussion, I'm sure it will continue, hope to have an update next time we meet, I'll progress on this and. Once we actually have that research partner in place, I'm sure that entity will. Want to follow up on a lot of these questions and topics. Mercedes?
Thank you so much. That was great. Thank you, everybody for contributing. As was kind of mentioned, if you do have some like reports or other inputs. That you think would be helpful. Let's. Continue to share those, I think. Don't think it would be in violation of our public meetings for you to send a report to Helen. But then just, I guess, don't discuss the report, but I think you can share documents, links that are available on. The public interwebs and whatnot. Okay, so. The next part of our agenda is going to be a look ahead. So we've started to, I think, kind of bucket out a lot of work. And the jam board activity produced a lot of. Questions and kind of setting the table for what information is needed to start kind of moving into our solution oriented space. So I'm going to propose to you all a structure for effectively the next five months. And then we'll go over kind of what that will look like. And as was mentioned, kind of at the beginning. Mary Ann had brought up earlier that this task force is being asked to submit an official two page. Set of recommendations. So we should think about that as like essentially our executive summary. I'm sure we're going to have other documents that would, that we will want to share, but our kind of official deliverable to. DAS and the legislature will be that two page. So it really helps us think about how we prioritize. The big takeaways from this work. And so I'm going to share my screen. And chat a little bit about the plan. So. The idea here is to take our six subjects and break them into five presentations that'll happen over the course of the next five months. In our agenda planning meeting, we did a little bit of prioritization around like what we think might. Take the longest to do or what might be interesting to scaffold first and then come in later. And these will primarily be our requests to the departments to come and present information. So that means that we're going to be putting ourselves as a task force into like a big listening mode. We're going to be getting a lot of information from the different departments who are able to respond to these questions. That we're going to pose to them and we'll go over what the specific questions are in a moment. So starting in January, we would ask departments to come with. Feedback on payment models that prioritize full cost recovery. So each department that is in here, we will ask you to prepare a little bit of information that you could present. You're welcome to partner with each other if you have same answers to things. But if you also come with your own individual remarks, that is also fine, keeping in mind that we do have. Three hours, so it's a lot of time, but you don't each get three hours. You'll all have to fit in to the one presentation in January and we'll want to make sure we're also saving time. For any additional announcements or discussion during that time. So that puts January at the full cost recovery and then February, we would move into the uniform application procedures. In March, we would look at changes to state procurement practices to support living wages. I think that'll probably be one of the big ones. April, looking at standard contracting language and a mechanism for ongoing review. So those are technically two separate ones in our charter, but we think that those ones can go together. And wanting to also make sure to clarify for the departments that the mechanism for ongoing review. Is an evaluation of the grant making and procurement process, which might be different than. What you might think of ongoing review as oversight over your grantees. So this is more, what is, what is your way of holding your agency, your department accountable, what kind of. Systems do you either already have in place or could have in place? To make sure that your grant making is and procurement processes are current. And working well for you and not reintroducing burden down the line after we've solved all the great problems. And then in May, we would be looking at that sufficient reporting requirement. And so this is how we would sync with, sync sequence these presentations. And then going into June, July, August is basically us taking that information that is a task force and developing our recommendations in each of those buckets. Debbie, yes, please.
Thank you. I just have a clarifying question on January specifically and maybe a couple of the others. So for the January presentation. Are you wanting a presentation from agencies on the payment models? Under grant agreements and payment models under what could be, say, a deliverables based contracting scenario or is that? Is this one focused just on grants?
So I think this one's going to be focused on both. We can actually, if there's no questions about the process, we can actually jump into the questions. So what we've also done is we've taken our jam board and we've now put it into an Excel spreadsheet. I've also added to it actually as we've been going through this discussion today. Because things came up that fit in there. And so that'll give you a sense of what we want to see in your, in your presentation, but. in your, in your presentation. But so just one last call, any questions about this kind of process or the sequencing of presentations? Okay, so I'm going to stop sharing that and I'm going to bring up a new document. And this new one is what had, oh man, it's going to look teeny. Sorry, hold on just one second. Okay. So this next one I'm going to show you is a collection of the questions and topics that came up during our Jamboard as well as some that I've added. I've also kind of grouped them into some topics to be able to kind of assist with how those presentations could be put together. So let's go ahead and take a look at that. Okay, so we have, you can see probably at the bottom of the screen, we have a tab for each one of our groupings. And so this will be provided to the departments before you get into your presentation mode. So here's what we would be looking at for January. So on the side here, like I said, I've kind of grouped some of these. I would say we have a couple of questions here that are really about just the current scope of your partnership, the number of grants and contracts that you're currently reviewing, the total dollar value of those contracts. And then we have questions around training, around management of those contracts, kind of like what, what is the training that's provided to people who are monitoring grants? How are they prepared to interface with nonprofit organizations and get into this process? What are, what are the directions that are given to them for what they can and can't do? I think that's going to be really helpful for us. I think that's sometimes a little bit of a black box for nonprofits. It's like, we know you have a set of guidelines that you're following. And I don't necessarily know what those are. So we can kind of unearth some of those, I think will be helpful. We definitely have questions here around indirect rates. So like, how do we increase indirect rates? Quite, another question is, why are we not just using a 10% de minimis across the board? So for your individual agency, how many of your contracts or grants are below 10%? And there's probably also a why here. And payment schedule. So we know, we've talked a lot about kind of dispersments, periodic dispersments or reimbursement base. So how is it determined which you use in which contract? Why would you offer somebody a scheduled dispersment? And then you offer somebody else a reimbursement only? What are the guidelines that are leading to those decisions? Also on payment, this was a comment from somebody that the green ones are more like comments where everything else is kind of questioned. So just to keep some of that clear. So like, we're finding a problem with it taking too long to get paid. So questions there. How does your department monitor how long it takes you to make dispersment of payments? And is there any internal accountability? Most of us, I think, have grants and contracts that actually say we're supposed to get paid back within 30 days of submitting an invoice. So if that doesn't happen, if you have that in your agency's contract language and that doesn't happen, what happens? Is there any accountability? Does any boss care that their grant managers aren't able to meet those marks? Is any accounting manager care if the invoices aren't getting paid? Like, what, what is the internal process for reviewing those things? Also on indirect rates, thinking about services being delivered versus the data collection. So do you take that into account? Are you thinking about how much data reporting you're asking? And does that show up in what's approved as far as indirect rates? And do we have any grants or contracts that use an estation process? So this is where you would actually get the money upfront. And then you would identify what is an approved service that also then has to be approved. So if you say I bought, you know, toys and toys isn't allowed, you're going to have to find a new cost to attest there. It's how a lot of FEMA and HUD funds also operate. So how almost all of our Medicaid, state Medicaid funding is done. But are there any of these that are being used in your department in smaller scale partnerships? And then what came with that was a question around, can you list the number and type of grants and contracts that you have? Like, do you have like 75% are contracts and 25% are grants? And any differences in the types of services? Like, do you typically use grants for arts projects and use contracts for human services? Like, how, how are you differentiating these things? More on adjustable contracts is how do we build a mechanism that's responsible, responsive to organizations of different size? So part of the question there is, do you have any differences? When you're looking at your policies and procedures, do you have any differences in how you treat organizations of different sizes? That may be a simple yes or no. It might be more complicated depending on what your internal practices look like. Contract evaluations, what contract evaluations are used to allow for full cost recovery? So I think we're talking a lot about how it doesn't. So when can it? When does it? Like, when is that a goal for the agency to make sure that they're fully paying for the work that they're trying to draw down? And what assumptions are also made in that based on agency size? And a follow-up kind of question to that, you guys say like, the reason these are stacked together is these usually kind of go together. Another follow-up question to that is, are there practices for adjusting contracts for inflation or other provider identified increases? If not, how is a current service level calculated? Right? So a lot of times we will get notifications from state agencies that like, we didn't get our current service level funded, and so therefore we're cutting everybody's funding. Or we did get our current service level funded, and so everyone's getting flat funding or everyone's getting 5% increase or like, so what are you doing in your calculation of current, of current service level? Do you account for inflation? Do you account for growing costs? Or when you say current service level, you mean just the same number of dollars? And then moving this up a little bit just because I, my computer, my screen is in front of my screen. Then we have questions around what, how are contracts adjusted over time? This is very similar to kind of this question here around just like what's happening in the next year. What portions of grants are multi-year? Do any extend beyond the biennium? So it's like, if your agency does multi-year contracts, does that mean two years? Are you ever able to do more than two years? And then aligned with that is if you are crossing over two different bienniums, how are you bridging the gap so that you begin the biennium with new service, with new services still going to ensure continuity? Are you just kind of hoping that all your providers keep working even though they're not getting paid? Do you have a plan for how you work with your providers on maintaining continuity? And this was a partner scope, I think I already mentioned this one. And then again, around some indirect rate is like compliance. So does compliance impact how much you might allow for indirect? If there's a lot of compliance, that this is like a licensing certified set of programs, does that get you a higher indirect rate or higher admin investment? Or does it not matter? That's a, that's a lot. Helen?
Yeah, I had a anecdote that might help with the two green comments that we could potentially turn into questions. It's only because I just heard this from Oregon Community Foundation, but for the part about training related also to payment schedules, also related to payment accountability. In the example, they told me about an organization kept sending in their reimbursement request and they got it kicked back, I think, seven or eight times with different documentation. And that could be a training question, like, maybe they didn't know what documentation they needed or they didn't know what was allowable. But that wasn't shared with them. And then the other question is, okay, like, on the part of the agency, why didn't that all come through the first time? Or if not the first time, at least the second? So I think that, you know, it, it can be linked very tangibly to a common understanding of what is expected and what the agency needs to fully process the reimbursement so that partners aren't waiting, thinking, okay, the next communication I get, it will be my reimbursement when in fact, they have six or seven more series of requests for documentation.
Yeah. So I think this is training, but I think this is also maybe what we often call technical assistance, right? So what do you provide to your grantees to understand what they need to do to be compliant with you? Just as much as what does your staff know about how to follow along with the requirements that are needed? I like that. So it's kind of a little bit of a duel. Any other questions or comments about the content that's in here?
Just noting Dolly's comment in the chat. She says, I want to flag also that if funds are federal, this documentation part gets very complex. And I have a follow-up question on that because is it complex because of the uniform? Like, could you share more about what?
Um, this is Dolly England. Hi, good afternoon. She heard Queen, Community Engagement Program Manager over at OHA. So what you described feels very FEMA-like to me. And I don't know if there are others on the line that have dealt with FEMA, but like, you didn't provide enough documentation, we're sending it back to you, we're asking for more. That is very, that's sounding very FEMA-like. And I, it is complex and hard. And we, as the state, don't have a lot of control because we're needing to provide said documentation back to FEMA. And so I don't know if we'll have another pandemic, but I can see CBOs that might have been in that lane and had those experiences. There, there could be other kind of documentation things, but I can see that especially coming up if there are federal dollars at play.
So I see, thank you so much for that. I see two things coming out of that. First, understanding the origin of the, the funds. Because that will be different. We'll say when I receive federal funds, we actually push back on any documentation requests that were not discussed in the uniform guidance. Were you, were able to use the uniform guidance as like, kind of that, that source document to both understand what was requested of us and also to say like, the request that you're asking is actually not within that guidance? Sometimes it doesn't work because on ultimately, like, there's a power differential. But I think, you know, that's kind of two things for us as a task force to examine as separate issues.
Agreed. And I think when we're getting into these presentations, it's really, I think it can be helpful to agencies say like, so we have, you know, 100 million in grants and contracts that we're doing, but only 25 of it is state funds. Like, feel free if you feel like the need to explain the proportion of what can follow state state law and agency practice versus what your total is. I think that's fine. But for the purposes of these conversations, we want to, I think, stay also focused on what, what is state practice? Because that's the thing that we're trying to review and make recommendations on. I think we would all love to make recommendations on lots of federal things. And hopefully there's another table that is working on that. But I think it can be helpful if you, if you feel like in order to kind of ground in that solution-oriented conversation, you first have to create boundaries around what it actually is that is within state control. I think you can do that in your presentations as well. Any other comments or thoughts on our set of questions up here? I did also mention at the top that if something was percolating for you in some of the discussion about rules. So if you want to bring back any comments or questions that you might have from the top of the meeting that you think is relevant to what we're going to ask the agencies to bring us in January, again, it's just going to be this page. We're going to have multiple pages for multiple topics, but right now for the January presentation, we're really looking at this question of payment that prioritizes full cost recovery. Yes, please.
I'm just, this is not a fully formed thought. I want to acknowledge that. But I'm just thinking in a commitment to partnership and accountability, like, if there are questions that the nonprofits can answer or that philanthropy can answer, that the, the departments want to hear from us, like, I feel like this is, you know, all the questions that are being asked are just a kind of a testament of like, we don't all understand what each other does and, you know, who's in charge of who. And so I guess I would hope that if the different departments have these level of questions, like, I want to commit to getting them answered. So, I mean, if, if we get nothing from this whole process, can we at least understand how each other does our work, the values that guide us? I think that would be its own huge win. Thanks.
I think that's a great point. If you have like, an internal document that is like your guidebook around grants and contracts, I think that would be extremely helpful to bring into this space to share with us what, what are the, the tools that you are using that are guiding what you do, can do, can't do, where you are able to have flexibility and not? If you have those, please include that as part of your presentation as well. And if you've got ones that are like different for different items, you can bring them to different presentations. But I think just understanding to that point, what, what sandbox you're playing in versus what sandbox we're playing in, I think it's going to be really helpful for also understanding where we have the most opportunity, like where changes would be the most impactful. Because I, you know, I think that we might come up with a lot of recommendations and not everything will have the same level of impact. And I think it's an understanding those overlaps where we'll be able to identify what's going to have the greatest level of impact. Okay, I definitely want to open it up. Also, I want to make sure state agencies, since this, these are the series of questions we're going to ask you to bring to a presentation in January. If you have any questions about what's on here, what this is trying to get at, let's definitely use this time. This is the, essentially the last formal thing on our agenda. And, you know, we're only, we're at 11:30, we have till noon. So we have plenty of time if you want to ask any follow-up questions about the information that's here. Oh, no, it's blurry. Can I make that better?
Is this the document that we could all look at, like offline?
Yes, I don't see why not. And we can add this, I guess, to our task force website. It's going to keep being edited. I hope, I hope that's fine. Because like, you'll be able to see, like, this one doesn't look as nice, right? Some of these look really good and, and some of them were still developing. But here is a link to this document. And again, these are really just the, it's the same as the Jamboard with some structure and some things added.
I was, but this is Bettina. I was just wondering, you know, in this whole discussion too, we, you know, sometimes departments have monies left over. And because of turnover, you know, in agencies, sometimes contracts or grants can't be fully spent and how, you know, how agencies think about that? Because that's another way, I think, that there could be flexibility in the system to recognize that if agencies aren't fully funded, that there's ways to support unexpected costs, technology costs, you know, investments into long-term infrastructure, you know, with rules around it, you know, because we know what fixed asset rules are and all those things. But I know that agencies potentially have some flexibility that we don't know about, you know, what, what elements of flexibility that the agencies have to be responsive during a contract term or a grant term to make adjustments. You know, say, you know, when we saw the inflation, payroll inflation, you know, what, what can be done? Because I, I also think, you know, how often do you request a budget? How often do you have a budget review? Those are all compliance costs, but they're also way of figuring out how much it actually costs.
I, I'm just, I, I'm trying to read all this and thank you, Mercedes, so much for doing this. It's just easier to, for us to navigate and I think too for the public to navigate. I, I'm thinking about some of the legal questions I asked, so I might need to follow up, but I, I do think it's still critical that over the next couple of months, we have a solid we have a solid understanding of what would actually require legal changes versus what is like administrative, internal, even, you know, cultural practices within an organization. So that's just on my mind and I just wanted to voice that. Thanks.
I think that's great. And I, I think we can, you know, within your presentations, where you can identify an OAR or an, or an RRS. So we have an understanding, like if this is to your point, like just kind of cultural practice, this is just the way we do it. Or if this is part of guidelines or laws that we are required to follow. And anywhere you do know that, if you could note it in your presentation, I think that'll also be helpful. And then I think what you're getting at Felice is more of that overall review. And so that might help us with a little bit of information. But I think there was like a memo that you talked about in an agenda planning meeting that would be a little bit more full concept. And so I think that even if we can get some of these references, I think that's still something we want to look at. Representative Conrad.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Couple of things. First thing, hopefully when the agencies present, that they start off with a 101, including their agency organizational structure and who has decision-making authority. And the other side with that, I'd be certainly curious if the folks that are presenting are going to have the authority or the ability to also offer in what staff would like to see changed? Because they see it on that backend. And if they see things in their processes that we should look at, I would love to know the staff thoughts as well. So hopefully they've got the authorization, the ability to convey those thoughts.
That is helpful. I think that can also, so as I mentioned, kind of, kind of grouped some topics on the side here. So your current scope of partnership. If you're already actively like changing something or under review with something around payment, like for this one specifically, that could be helpful in maybe getting at some of that. Like what are, what are your recommendations as far as what should be changing? Might be things that are already underway. Because we know that internally, the agency departments are also doing your own improvement iteration, right? Any questions from agency staff about what we're asking you to do for January? Or any feedback on whether or not this structure works? All right. Let that pause hang out there for a little bit and go ahead and stop sharing. As I mentioned, we'll keep kind of playing with that document so that each subject area will have kind of those lists of types of questions. So we're able to get back to that. Oh, go ahead, Derek.
Hi, I did one thing that I noticed that was not stated on that list was maybe some mechanism for you to discover the, the inundation of agreement requests. The like, so I run the procurement unit for my agency. And I think each agency probably suffers the same fate, which is when we get to start a new biennium, we're waiting for the money to pass from DAS to our agency. And we are also working on getting agreements going as requested by our agency's various programs. And what I don't think is captured on that request for information about our processes is the actual like scope of those requests. So I get hundreds of requests July 1, you know, to, to put agreements in place. And so that's why you're seeing things cascade until March or, or later for when they're actually executed, because you see one little piece of the larger picture. And so I, I have on my data collection, I can actually tell you how many requests I got for that first, maybe first quarter, maybe that would be helpful to you. I don't, I don't know. And I don't know if other agencies have tracked that data to be able to tell you how many requests they got as well. Assuming we want to focus on state funded opportunities. But I, I just thought I'd share that. That might be helpful if agencies could capture the number of requests that we got in the, in the first quarter of this biennium.
So when you say requests, what, what is a request?
Right, so a program director will say, hey, the legislature, you know, passed this bill appropriating $1 million for this, you know, workforce ready program. We need requests for grant applications drafted, going through the process with DOJ and external interested parties. And then we issue it, we do the, the evaluation process, and then we issue grant agreements from that. That all derives from that, that, that first request for, request for grant opportunities or request for grant applications. So I get one, you know, from, for each specific program that is passed with appropriations from the legislature.
And are you counting each one of those steps as a separate request? Or that was all one request?
They all relate to the one, but let's say workforce ready round two had, you know, 40 plus grants come out of it. So I can, I can drill down into that. Like I got this request, but it resulted in 43 grants or something like that.
Yeah, because I think some of the questions that we have here around kind of your current scope of partnerships, I think is trying to get at a little bit of that, like how many, how many grants? How many contracts? How many partners? How much money? How many in each bucket? Right? So I think some of these questions are getting at that. And if that's how you organize your information, then I think it is really helpful for us to, to see what, what that scope looks like, for sure. Thank you. Go ahead, Dolly.
Hi, I just wanted to expand on what Derek was saying and give you some additional context. So within the Public Health Division, come June 30th of this year, all 157 of the contracts that we have with community-based organizations ended. And we knew we would have additional money coming from the legislature that would be awarded in July sometime. But we didn't want to end our contracts. And so we created this whole process, which we called the bridge period, to get people through the summer in legislative session and making sure the money kind of gets where it needs to go within the state so that we could then give it out to community. So it's, I'm the next step from Derek. And like I just gave him 157 contracts that he needs to amend and that that office needs to help us with. So it's, it does get very complicated.
That's great. And we do have a question in there about how do you bridge the gap? Understanding that that might look different from agency to agency. So I think that's a great, you know, being able to, to share what that structure looks like for you and how the partners you're working with are able to be connected would be very helpful. Go ahead, Representative Conrad.
Thank you again. One of the things from the agencies, and this is a broad issue area that I'm, I always keep an ear out for, is the capacity of an agency to take on the new requests coming from the legislature. Because we put so much on the agencies. And particularly as it comes to budgeting, one of the things that I would like to get a handle on is expectations for monies coming through. So that if we know if it's going to take an agency six months to get the money out the door, then maybe we carve a little bit off that overall request and give them 18 months worth of funding instead of 24, because we know that they're not going to be able to get it. And then that gives us a chance to allocate that monies to higher beneficial use than sitting in a bank account and never being allocated, waiting for the rebalance in the next session. So I would love to know as best you can articulate it, is what is the capacity of your individual agencies to get this done? I won't say timely, but what, what is it and what can you do? And how fast can you go if you're dealing with 100 applications? That takes a lot of time and a lot of your workday to be able to do that. And I can appreciate all the work that goes into that, having done some of that myself. So thank you.
That's great. Thank you very much. I did see a comment also about the DOJ approval and where that falls into your timeline. So I think if you identify, I'm going to put this a little bit back on the departments. If you identify the DOJ approval process as something that is interrupting your ability to reach full cost recovery, then feel free to include that as responsive to this presentation. That may, that point might end up being more in our standard contracting language discussion, maybe changes to wages, maybe that's part of our mechanism for ongoing review. I'm not exactly sure where that fits because I know that's been, that, that is part of the process. And since this first presentation is centered around how to achieve full cost recovery, if you feel like the DOJ process is your agency's ability to meet full cost recovery, then I encourage you to bring that into the discussion. If that ends up showing up later for us, more in the standard contracting language, the ongoing mechanism for review, that that's where it feels like it fits. I think that's fine. I think the standard contract language is actually where we had a couple of DOJ questions already. Again, if you're looking at that slide, it's not as clean and fancy. But I think we do have DOJ questions in other sections as well. But again, if, if it feels like that is interrupting your ability to meet full cost recovery, then, you know, feel free to bring it in. Go ahead, Kirk.
Yes, thank you. Representative Conrad's comment's very helpful. And we've looked at different ways, along with Dolly's comments as well, at bridging. And, you know, there, on the federal side of things, what we're up against is the Anti-Deficiency Act, which is basically advancing over the federal fiscal year payments that have not been appropriated yet. So on the state side, we're looking at evergreen language. I've been working with DOJ on that. And so there, there are some interesting also in agreements that we can do. So we're looking to, to not synchronize everything for a 30 June termination. So I mean, that, that is like, that's one of the lowest hanging, you know, ways to look at it. And sometimes it's difficult because of the program, you know, appropriation cycle. And we're dealing with an ODHS and OHA, we have over 200 programs. So, you know, and the big ones, child welfare, APD, self-sufficiency, VR, the big programs that many, you know, tens of thousands come in during the close of bias. So that's something that we've messaging, we've put out to our contract administrators. We have nearly 500 of them in, in the, both agencies around the state. And we notify them at 90-day, 60-day and 30-day intervals of, of, you know, they want to amend the contract, extend it, to connect with our folks and begin that process. So we have what's, and many of the agencies in the state have done this, a service level agreement whereby we take a look at, you know, given the current processes and, and constraints and, and requirements, that kind of thing. We, we look at quantifying what, what it'll take to develop a, a full-blown RFP, for instance. And what we have found in talking to, you know, NAO, Philip and his, his group and others, many other groups, is that when we get in a hurry with the solicitations, sometimes the, the smaller organizations, the ma and pa's, don't have enough time. They don't have people on staff full-time to write, you know, big proposals and responses. And they don't, you know, have attorneys on staff and that kind of thing. So they have to buy that. So we thought that it may be a constraint to, you know, get in a hurry with these and we should look at longer cycle times to leave it in, you know, a proposal on the street longer so that some of the, the smaller organizations can respond. And that's something we're in conjunction with EO 20215. We have, we, we have full-time outreach person. We kind of carved out of Hyde a few years ago and, and has really come into its own. But OHA just received a full-time outreach person as well. So we're looking at programs connecting with us early on so we can understand what the need is. And if there's particular historically disadvantaged population we're looking to serve, begin doing outreach early on at the leading edge of the process. And we can stage it in such a way that, you know, if, if there are, and looking at the market research, if there are multiple vendors in an area that can serve this purpose, then we'll do something akin to an RFA, which is a request for application, which doesn't require a full-blown proposal being submitted. It's, it's a little different. It's, you're meeting minimum qualifications. And we can do that process with grants too. So yeah, there's, there are, there are some considerations mentioned earlier, you know, with Heck and Derek, you know, we get the, the deluge. So really the backlog for us is, is what the delay is, is, is just people, you know, working, you know, eight, 10 hours a day writing agreements. And it's just a bottleneck in that regard. But I think there are ways that, I mean, I'm excited about things that this group can do to, to look at, you know, different alternatives and even legislative solutions to some of the problems. But thank you.
That's great. And yes, Representative Conrad, it does sound like a good argument for pre-approval, pre-authorization. You know, I think that just as much as there's a lot of, a lot of that challenge in collecting that information from providers, I also find that for like our organization, we have, I think it's maybe two or three pages of just standard answers, because everybody asks, what's your mission? What populations do you serve? How are you, you know, addressing the needs of your community ongoingly? Like, so there's a lot of questions that everybody asks the exact same question. And so we kind of have our answer already prepared. If we had a pre-approval, you would ask an agency that once. Maybe they have like a little agency profile they could update if they started serving a new community or changing those things. So it wouldn't have to be so much of that broad information, but getting closer down into those specific buckets of information you need to collect, but whether or not they can perform the specific task at hand. I think that's really interesting. And then also hearing you talk about like the shifting timelines. You know, what if, what if we didn't have a contract period that matched the fiscal period, but allowed for that actual time for adjustment? And I think that's a good question for the legislature. For example, would you approve of a department being able to pay somebody into August from the previous biennium's allocation? And then start paying them with the new biennium's allocation starting in September, right? Because that's what would ultimately need to be shifted is an allowance to spend beyond that June timeline with funds prom, funds allocated in a previous year. But that's really helpful. It's really interesting detail. Any other comments or info sharing? I'm seeing some more questions in the chat now that I think are going to be great for when we get to our contract, standard contract language and uniform application. Try to figure out a way to capture this so we don't lose them. Yeah, okay. I need to make some notes for those other pieces. Well, if we don't have any more questions or discussion.
I just have a question. All right, and what's the best way to feed into this document? If I want to have like a question?
Yeah, so I would say probably the agenda planning meetings. So this first one for January, I think we don't want to make too many more edits because now we've shown it with our departments, we've had this discussion. But in our next agenda planning meeting, we can look at February and March, et cetera, et cetera, and start building those out as well.
Yeah, we have plenty of time. Thank you.
Okay. So if that's feeling closed, I don't think we have, I'm going to double check our agenda just in case. We don't have anything else on the agenda for today. So we will go ahead and call the meeting to close. Thank you so much, everybody, for being here today and participating. I look forward to seeing you in the new year with our, our listening season is what we'll call it